Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for the Holcombe City Council Candidate Forum hosted by the Garden City Area Chamber of Commerce and the Chamber Government Affairs Committee. My name is Laura Blake-Bores and I currently serve as a member of the Chamber Government Affairs Team and will serve as the moderator for this evening's event. Joining me to help keep track of time is Micah Bunch, President of the Garden City Area Chamber of Commerce. Tonight, we welcome the following candidates vying for a seat on the Holcombe City Council: Brian Crockett, Erica Ortega, and Corey Williams. Candidates unable to attend this evening are Tina Brungart, Mandy Fritz, Sam Mesa, and Trevor Welch. Candidates, we appreciate you taking the time out of your busy schedules to join us this evening. The process for tonight's forum will begin with each candidate providing a one-minute opening statement, followed by the question and answer session, and will conclude with a one-minute closing statement. Each candidate will be allowed ninety seconds to respond to each question. This is a closed-question forum. You will not be allowed rebuttal questions, or answers will be permitted. Without further delay, we will begin tonight's program with the one-minute opening statement, and Erica, we will begin with you.
My name is Erica Ortega. I have lived in Holcombe for the last eighteen years. I have worked for the city of Holcombe on two separate occasions as the Deputy Clerk and City Clerk. I currently am the Executive Assistant for a Substance Abuse Treatment Center. I have helped jobs in public service and field that has helped shape the person that I am today. With my experience, I can listen and advocate for the needs of our community. If I am elected, I want to be the person that our community can trust and rely on.
Thank you. Corey?
Hi, my name's Corey Williams. For the past seven years, my wife and I have proudly called Holcombe our home. In that time, we've witnessed our community grow, thrive, and become a place we deeply proud to be a part of. As someone who has the honor of protecting our town, I've always believed in service before self. Now, I'm ready to take that commitment further by stepping up to help shape Holcombe's future, one rooted in: Strong values, thoughtful leadership, and a vision for long-term success. I'm running for Holcombe City Council because I believe in integrity in decision-making, transparency in government, progress that benefits all residents. Holcombe is already a great place to live, but I know we can make it even better, whether it's ensuring public safety, supporting smart growth, improving infrastructure, or strengthening community programs. I'm committed to working for you and with you. Together, we can build a strong, safer, and more vibrant Holcombe.
Thank you. Brian?
My name's Brian Crockett. I am currently serving on the Finney County Planning Commission as Holcombe's representative. I've been the Board President of the Garden City Board of Realtors. I'm one of the co-owners of Crockett &amp; Co. Real Estate, where I'm the managing broker. I am a lifelong resident of Holcombe. I grew up here, so Holcombe's raised me, and I feel like giving back to the community, so I want to be part of ensuring that that continues, and that's all I have.
Thank you, candidates, for your opening statements. At this time, we'll begin the question-and-answer portion of this evening's forum. As previously stated, you will each have ninety seconds to answer the question, and we will begin with Corey. What motivates you to seek a seat on the Holcombe City Council? And what unique experiences or perspective will you bring to support the community's success?
I'm passionate about our community. The seven years I've been part of it, I've been community-oriented amongst the community. I have, you know, a lot of drive, strong communication skills, and a good rapport with the community. And having those skills is very important, and, you know, being honest and transparent with our residents. You know, that's a big challenge, and being on the City Council to help be a voice for our residents.
Thank you. Brian?
Can you repeat it?
What motivates you to seek a seat on the Holcombe City Council? And what unique experiences or perspective will you bring to support the community's success?
My experiences to bring community success would stem from my experience, you know, operating a business, being on the Planning Commission, being with the Board of Realtors. I believe in service, you know, what you put into something is what you're going to get out of it. I want to continue my service and help the community grow and flourish in the correct direction.
Erica?
Can you repeat the question one more time?
Sure. What motivates you to seek a seat on the Holcombe City Council? And what unique experiences or perspective will you bring to support the community's success?
Well, I feel like if you want to be a part of the change, you need to be part of it. And so, I feel that with my previous experiences working for the city, it kind of gives me a little advantage of kind of knowing about our community, knowing, you know, what expectations are. And I, you know, really want to be a voice for the community, be transparent, be involved, have the community involved in the decision-making. I think we kind of lack in that department a little bit, so I would like to be a voice for our community.
Thank you. Brian, we'll start with you this time. Holcombe's Council operates in a mayor-council model with resident input available during meetings. How will you ensure inclusive representation and make local government more accessible and responsive to residents?
On the meetings I've attended, it seems like the input of the community is greatly appreciated. I would hope to see that continue. I think letting people know about issues or community feedback for the council helps the council make the correct, you know, decisions based off what the community feels is best and for the future of the community.
Erica?
I think we need to make our meetings more inviting, make people feel like their voice is being heard. Not a lot, when I worked at the city, not a lot of people attended council meetings, so that's kind of one thing that I would like to, you know, let people know in our community to come and attend those meetings. Your voice will be heard, not just get on social media and complain, but actually come to a meeting, because our council members, they do listen, and they are there to make positive changes in our community. And they can't do that if they don't know what the wants and needs are for our community.
Corey?
I think being, like the two said, you know, knowing the meetings, and I think being out in the public, you know, organizing neighborhood meetings, town meetings, streamlining, you know, because not everybody can make a council meeting. And there are a lot of people that are interested in the information. I think by streamlining and having online feedback, you know, from our residents that we can take into consideration to be able to listen and then, as a council, you know, collaborate together to, you know, come to a decision. And, you know, it works better for the council and the residents, you know, being able to be a part of it. You know, there's a lot of times, I know a lot of people that I've talked to don't even know who's on the City Council. I think being more visible and out in these meetings to, you know, speak with the residents so they know who's on the council and who to come to and stuff.
Thank you. Erica? With rising property valuations leading to higher tax bills for many residents, how would you approach keeping the mill levy flat or low while still meeting the city's service and infrastructure needs?
I think being proactive, knowing what the needs are in our community, knowing what the needs are from each department, and that's going to kind of let us know what we're needing to spend in the future. And if we're able to maintain that mill levy during budgeting time, I think that's important. But also, again, getting the community involved, getting them to attend budget hearings, so that way they know what the city is planning on spending, what the needs are for our community, instead of just complaining when, you know, our taxes go up, when the mill levy goes up, all of that. So, I think, again, just being transparent, getting them into meetings, educating the community on budgeting, and what the needs are for our community.
Corey?
Could you repeat that, please?
Sure. With rising property valuations leading to higher tax bills for many residents, how would you approach keeping the mill levy flat or low while still meeting the city's service and infrastructure needs?
I personally would, you know, I'd support a comprehensive audit to, you know, identify areas of efficiency, you know, where we could, you know, save money, you know, explore grant opportunities, you know, to help with revenue. I would, you know, because as a resident, we want to balance a budget, you know, so it doesn't, you know, put a burden on our residents. Nobody likes to pay higher taxes, and, you know, I believe being able to find places where, you know, if we had to, you know, decrease in the budget, but our infrastructure is very important, as we know from previous issues, that we keep it up because, you know, we've got to look into the future. The town's going to grow, and we've got to make sure we're able to sustain the growth.
Brian?
With the question of taxes, nobody likes to pay more taxes. But we do have a fiscal responsibility to our community as far as making sure the money is being spent properly, wisely. Growth would stem more property taxes and spreading the burden out on a wider scale. I think, you know, having, sitting and looking at the budget, seeing where the money's being spent, where can we save money, where can we not afford to save money at? Just kind of budgeting. But growth also leads to more revenue.
Corey, we'll start with you this time. There's discussion about a potential large-scale commercial development in Holcombe. What's your vision for economic expansion in Holcombe? And how would you weigh new commercial opportunities alongside community vitality and fiscal impact?
I think growth is important to a certain extent, but we, as a city, got to sit down and be able to make sure our infrastructure can handle. If they're tied to water lines, to sewer lines, roads that need to be maintained, if it's in the city, we've got to make sure we are capable of handling that without, you know, a lot of issues. Obviously, I think it's very important to be communicating with our residents to get their input and be a voice to advocate for them on, you know, Holcombe, we are a small community. Yes, we may need to see some growth, but we want to still remain the small community we are.
Brian?
Can you repeat it?
Sure. There's discussion about a potential large-scale commercial development in Holcombe. What's your vision for economic expansion in Holcombe? And how would you weigh new commercial opportunities alongside community vitality and fiscal impact?
We'd have to look at the infrastructure, make sure the infrastructure's either there or we have the capabilities of implementing that infrastructure. As far as impact with commercial, as long as it doesn't interfere too much with the community, you know, if you're talking about commercial properties, you know, what's the traffic look like? What's the wear and tear on the roads look like? Can we sustain it, or do we have to look at other avenues? But growth is always a good thing. If you're not growing, you're not, you're shrinking. But no, I would, it would need to be looked at and discussed, and the positives and negatives await.
Thank you. Erica?
I agree with both of them, actually. Growth is important for our community. But like Corey said, we are Holcombe, we are a small town, and I think that's why a lot of people like to come to our community, because we are a small town. We are close-knit, and, you know, we feel safe. And I think, you know, bringing in big commercial might worry some people and take kind of that feel away from living in a small town. However, if we were to bring in big commercial, again, we do need to make sure that the city can sustain, you know, sewer, our school district, you know, can we house, you know, the kids in our schools? If it brings in more people into the community, our roads, you know, is it going to bring in more, you know, semi-trucks, is that going to do damage to our roads? Can our roads sustain that? And if not, you know, what are we going to spend to make sure that we can maintain all of that?
Brian, next question, and we'll start with you. Housing is a big topic in Holcombe with the city's first residential Housing Improvement District, or RHID, recently approved for new development. What types of housing do you believe Holcombe needs most? And how should programs like RHID be used to expand housing while keeping it affordable and fiscally responsible?
The RHID program, we're lucky to have such a program. Development is an expensive venture. It allows developers to develop a ground and, over time, recoup some of their expenses upfront. With the RHID program, the housing that's most needed is affordable housing. You should look at the income level of an area versus the expense of the housing market. You want to have houses, though, that are not going to deteriorate in value. You want houses that will be there, you know, in years to come. And the RHID program is pretty specific on what it allows you to do, and it's a great tool to use.
Erica?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. Housing is a big topic in Holcombe with the city's first residential Housing Improvement District, RHID, recently approved for new development. What types of housing do you believe Holcombe needs most? And how should programs like RHID be used to expand housing while keeping it affordable and fiscally responsible?
I'm not too familiar with the program, to be honest. However, we do need affordable housing for those first-time home buyers. You know, are they able to afford a $300,000 home on their salary? And I think, you know, listening to some of our contractors when they've built new additions and kind of seeing and listening to the expenses, it is expensive. And, you know, they need something to kind of recoup those, you know, the expenses that they're putting in. But also, you know, for us as buyers, we need to be able to afford something. So, if I'm buying a home for the first time and my salary is not able to accommodate a $300,000, $400,000 home, then I'm stuck renting, but then that comes another issue of rentals, and are there enough? So, I think it's important because there is a need, and there is a need for housing here in Holcombe.
Corey?
Just like these two said, the program is great. It is expensive to build a home. However, I think you have to look at the location and what type of home's going to be built. Obviously, you know, we like residents to be here, and if we're not building a home in an area that, you know, should be the same, you know, kind of the same type of home as is there, the value could go down, and you could run people out of certain areas. I think we, as a council, would have to, you know, definitely sit down and collaborate about, you know, the different areas where, you know, homes are going to be built, what type of homes. And, you know, back to the infrastructure, you know, are we capable of, you know, sewer lines holding that? You know, how much work and expense do we have to do to, you know, be able to sustain however many homes that are going to be built? Like they said, affordable homes, you know, we've got different classes of people everywhere. Some, you know, first-time home buyers, you know, some that got, you know, good salary jobs that can afford $300, $400 homes. But we've got to, you know, also look at the locations and, you know, what's suitable to keep our current residents. We have not pushed them out of town.
Erica, the next question goes to you, and if I ask this in court, I'd probably get an objection to it being a compound question, so bear with me for a minute. The city is currently seeking full-time law enforcement staff. As a council member, how will you ensure the safety of Holcombe? And what qualities do you believe are essential in public safety personnel? And how would you support their recruitment and retention?
I think our, you know, police chief is doing a great job. I think, as a council, you know, getting the reports, figuring out what the needs are for our community, as long as, I think as long as our police chief is working with our sheriff's department in having staff available, you know, to patrol the community, I think that's important. But we also need to look at benefits. We need to look at pay. Are we competitive? You know, are we, you know, looking at communities our size, you know, around the state? Are we, you know, do we have the same benefits? Do we have the same pay? Are we less? Do people want to move out here? Really kind of promoting the positive things that we have here in southwest Kansas, in Finney County, to make it appealing to someone who would want to move here if we hired outside of our community. And then, the ones that are in our community, how do you get them to come to our police department? And I think honestly, working with our police chief is really the key, as a city council, to know what their needs are.
Corey?
Can I ask you to repeat that again?
Sure. The city is currently seeking full-time law enforcement staff. As a council member, how will you ensure the safety of Holcombe? And what qualities do you believe are essential in public safety personnel? And how would you support their recruitment and retention?
Well, that's a good question for me. I spent several years in law enforcement, and I'm very dedicated to law enforcement. However, being a small town, it's a difficult job to get officers. You know, a lot of times, it's new recruits. They get their boots on the ground, get a little experience. They want to go to bigger departments, you know, where there's more action. Like Erica said, you know, we do got to look at benefits, you know, some kind of incentive that, you know, is appealing to them to keep them here. Obviously, you know, protect and serve for the city of Holcombe is very important. And especially if we continue to grow, if there's housing coming in, you know, we're going to need more officers. You know, so coming up with a way that we can recruit officers, you know, from the academy and being able to keep them, I think something good that would be, would be, you know, people are leaving. You know, let's, you know, have them do a, you know, fill out the paperwork, you know, you know, kind of, why are they leaving? You know, some feedback, you know, why are they leaving this area? And to help us, you know, better, you know, fix why people are leaving and how we can keep them here.
Brian? The city is currently seeking full-time law enforcement staff. As a council member, how will you ensure the safety of Holcombe? And what qualities do you believe are essential in public safety personnel? And how would you support their recruitment and retention?
Qualities, I believe, are essential are communications. People in law enforcement need to be good communicators. Typically, you're dealing with people in stressful situations. To maintain your integrity and to keep calm is a huge benefit. As far as recruiting, that would fall to, you know, making it appealing to, you know, officers, new officers, experienced officers, to why they would like our community. We do have a lot to offer, you know. It is, Holcombe's a great place to raise your families or just live in general. Not too many places where you can just walk around town and not have to worry about too much. As far as covering the gap until the positions are filled, you would have to, you know, we're lucky enough that we could coordinate probably with the sheriff's department as far as filling, you know, when our officers have to have time off, too. Communicating those needs to the sheriff's department and trying to coordinate some type of cooperation would be essential.
Corey, next question goes to you first. Quality of life is often what keeps families in a community. What specific steps would you take as a commissioner to improve quality of life in Holcombe, such as parks, recreation, public safety, or community amenities? And how would you prioritize those improvements within the city's budget?
Quality of life in Holcombe is very important, I think. Being out, as, you know, as I was always taught, the sun makes you grow. And so, being able to be, explore our parks, you know, families get out, get amongst the parks. And, you know, having community events and being amongst the community, you know, being, you know, we've got to work with our city services, you know, to keep our parks looking good. If we need to update things, you know, to make our parks better, obviously, we need to look at that. And, you know, but overall, we've got to, you know, budget, see what's in our budget, you know, talk, you know. We've got to have a, big on strategic planning and having goals, you know, setting goals, you know, different years on what we need to different years on what we need to do and stick to them and, and, you know, examine our budget and what we can do. And, you know, obviously make our town look better, you know. We got, you know, we gotta bring people in and, you know, they drive through, they see weeds and stuff, not taking care of it. You know, it doesn't make Holcombe look good. I think by, you know, keeping our town looking nice and, and going over everything, it'll bring people in and people out amongst the parks and stuff.
Brian. Quality of life is often what keeps families in the community. What specific steps would you as a council member to, take as a council member to improve quality of life in Holcombe? Such as parks, recreation, public safety, or community amenities? And how would you prioritize those improvements within the city's budget?
I believe as far as prioritizing, we would need to continue to take care of the, the parks and public areas that we already have. If we were looking to grow into, you know, a specific item that the community felt like they wanted. It could be, I'm just throwing ideas out there on, you know, if the kids wanted a skate park or something like that. Is that fiscal? Could we afford to do something like that? Is there a need for that? Is there a desire? That would need to be more of a, the community letting us know what they would like to see. If we can fit it into the budget, you know, you can only spend what you got coming in. So you don't wanna overdo your budget.
Erica.
So this is actually something that came up before when, when I worked at the city. And we actually sent out questionnaires to our community asking if they, if we could have something in our community, what would they like to see? I think there was dog parks, splash pads, skate parks. So I think, again, communicating with our, our community, seeing what those needs might, or those wants may be. I think not only asking what they want, but actually following through. And I think that's kind of, we, we lack in that as far as, you know, we ask, the community responds, but then it just kind of stops there. So I, I think, you know, doing more, more things in our community park. You know, bringing back, you know, the tree lighting ceremonies, bringing back our Fourth of July event. You know, our fire department has talked about doing different things in our parks. I think utilizing what we have already, you know, could be something good. We don't really need to spend the money, but, you know, if we needed to, then we look at our budget and see what we could afford.
Brian, next question, we'll start with you. As a city council member, what's your long-term vision for Holcombe over the next ten to fifteen years? And what are the top initiatives you would propose to promote sustainable growth, infrastructure resilience, and community well-being?
What I would like to see in the next ten to fifteen years is structured growth in, in Holcombe. And when I say that, I mean, one of the, the things that I've always enjoyed about Holcombe is if you let your kid go out and play, you didn't have to worry as far as, you know, traffic. Or are they gonna, you know, when I grew up, you got home when the lights came on or you were supposed to. I would like to continue to see that kind of community. So when I say structured growth, it would need to correlate with keeping the community the same feeling that you, you get, that you have now. That's about all I have. That's the one question.
Erica.
I would say probably more housing options is what I would like to see in the next ten to fifteen years. And a little commercial growth wouldn't be bad if you added another, I don't know, restaurant or something that, you know, we could use in the community. But I, I would say, I would say housing really would be a big one. Just for, you know, those people who want that small-town feel, you know, where they can come and, and live here and be part of our close community.
Corey.
I think we have to prepare for the future. I believe we will see some growth over the next ten years. It's how and when are we going to see that? And we need to make sure our current infrastructure is, I know we harped on that a lot, but we gotta make sure that's all capable for growth. And, you know, what can we do to, you know, you know, make our current town better? You know, if it's, you know, obviously taking care of our current businesses. And, you know, getting with our residents and, you know, and getting their opinions, you know, streamlining, having meetings with them, you know, to kind of see what, you know, what they think. But I believe we're gonna see growth and public safety is a, a big thing, you know. I'd like to see our town, you know, if it grows and, you know, we have a full-time police department and we're able to take care of that where the kids can play out and everything's safe. And make sure our school district's taken care of, you know. We gotta work really well with our school district, keep our kids safe going to and from school. And, you know, gotta make sure they're able to sustain the growth that, you know, we currently have. They also have a budget they have to stay in. So we kind of need to work together with our current residents and, and, you know, kind of talk as a council.
Erica, final question goes to you to start. What ethical principles do you believe are important for elected officials? And how should elected officials be held accountable for maintaining high ethical standards?
I think one, knowing what ethics is versus your own personal beliefs. But I think we need to put the needs of others before our own. Not have our own agenda when it comes to being on the city council. And, yeah, I think that's it.
Corey.
Could you repeat it again?
What ethical principles do you believe are important for elected officials? And how should elected officials be held accountable for maintaining high ethical standards?
Well, for ethics, obviously being on the council, you're, you know, pretty high standard. You got a lot of people that are looking up to you and you gotta set a good example for your city. And, you know, by, by your actions and your speaking. And, you know, I believe your integrity and being transparent with our residents, you know. That's, you know, obviously, you know, being on the council is, you know, pretty, you know, a lot of, you got a lot of people looking up to you. And, and even, you know, if you're not at meetings, if you're out in the public, you know, and people know who you are, obviously they're watching. And so I believe our integrity is very important.
Brian. What ethical principles do you believe are important for elected officials? And how should elected officials be held accountable for maintaining high ethical standards?
I would say a major principle of ethical or ethics would be integrity, you know, doing what's right. Even when nobody sees it or nobody knows about it. Maintaining professionalism about yourself, being willing to listen to the public, you know. You could be in the, in the store and somebody may come up to you and wanna who vent about any, any number of things that's going on in the, in the community. Being willing to listen, to take those concerns back to the city council and following up with people and, and letting them know where, where their concern is or, you know, a pathway to resolve it. Yeah, just integrity.
Take a deep breath. That concludes the question and answer portion of this evening's forum. We thank you for your time and willingness to take a part of this. And now we will invite each of you to provide your one-minute closing statement. And we will now begin with Brian, if you would like to begin.
In closing, thank you to the chamber for allowing us to come and get to know people and answer your questions. I just hope to be of, of service, you know, if I get elected. I'm a big proponent of serving your communities. You know, you only get in something what you, you only get out of something what you put into it. And so I hope in the future, you know, to continue that path of service.
Erica.
I just wanna thank everybody as well for coming out tonight and giving us the opportunity to share our thoughts for our community. I would hope to get elected. I, I would like to be an advocate for our community. Be someone that not only the community themselves, but our employees, you know, could feel that they could talk to in confidence and, you know, meet the needs of our community and be a positive change and see positive growth in our community.
Corey, we will conclude with you.
All right. Just like the others, thank you guys to the chamber. Thank you guys for coming out, for caring about your community. And, you know, I've just, you know, when I decided to run for, you know, Holcombe City, I, you know, saw an opportunity to make our community stronger. And, you know, I want to build Holcombe where every resident is heard, our streets are safe, our schools empower the next generation. We have discussed several important topics tonight. And I believe my experience gives me the best foundation to deliver on these goals. I ask for your vote on November fourth so we can work together to create a brighter future for Holcombe. Thank you, guys.
Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes tonight's program. Please join me in thanking our candidates for their time. Please join us next Monday, September twenty-second, where we will be listening to the candidates for the Garden City Community College. That event will take place on the second floor of the City of Garden City Administration Building at three oh one North Eighth Street. That forum will also be streamed on the chamber's Facebook page. As a reminder, today is National Voter Registration Day. Please make sure that your voter registration is up to date. If you have moved or changed your name since the last election, please make sure to update your registration. That, the deadline to do so is October fourteenth. And as Corey just mentioned, the general election is set for Tuesday, November fourth. We encourage the citizens of Holcombe, Garden City, and Finney County to vote. Again, thank you all for coming tonight and thank you for your time and answering our questions.